Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the flag.
To the fire of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. village board meeting. First item on the agenda, any public comments on agenda items on Paul?
Paul, I'm Tempehatri Lane. On number three, the well pipe repair, ninety percent complete. I was looking for something else on the minutes today. I never saw mention of this. What's wrong with it? When did it start?
Well, I know it was there was a leaking pipe. I can't answer when it started, and then I know it's almost complete.
Who's paying for it?
I can't answer it. I don't know.
It's not all well pipe.
You can make note of it, Christine, and we will look into it and get back to you.
Chris, do now.
The pipe is on the trailer that's technically ours to pull water from, so that's why I think the village is repairing it for emergency use if we ever need to.
The pipe is on one trailer.
Trailer that's that spilling water. It's where all the pumps are and stuff.
Yeah.
It's, uh, the pipes inside that trailer are broken, and that's what's being repaired.
But that's not our problem?
Yeah, but I think that trailer is ours.
But Paul, rather than guess, let me look into it, and one of us will get back to you.
All right, because I haven't seen, I didn't see it mentioned on any of the minutes prior to this that there was a problem, and I just wanted to find out how much it might cost to repair and what you've done so far. All right.
It's a fair question.
Yeah, it is, and I said, I'd rather than, I'm not going to guess. Let me get the information, and we'll have someone get back to you.
Okay.
Vinnie?
Paul, I'm from our court. Uh, on resolution one four three, how many bids did we get for the roof?
We received two bids.
And ABC Contract, who was the lowest bid?
ABC was the lowest bid.
Where are they from?
So we have decided, because we are, we are lacking some information, um, we're going to table that item for this evening.
We're supposed to have everything in today.
We, there was another company that wanted to place a bid as well, and it was supposed to come in today. We didn't receive it yet. We're gonna, we're gonna table it.
All right, just a little question. Where are they from?
They are from Jersey, as far as I, as far as I understand.
What was the close day on bids?
Well, here's what happened. We put it out for bid twice, as you know. We didn't get any bids because of prevailing wage. And then I, a company came out and decided they would bid on it. That was precision roofing. And then during that time, ABC came forward and put in a bid. So those are the two that we have to date. There was a big price discrepancy, so we want to further look into it a little bit.
Okay. Uh, resolution for the cameras, one four seven. Those cameras, what are they for?
Cameras?
Yeah. So what are we looking for there?
This is a grant for the PD, a tech grant. That's where the funds are coming from.
They should put that in the resolution, and it looks like we're paying for it when I say a resolution for not to exceed thirty-four thousand five hundred.
That's coming out of the.
That's the last of the grant.
Okay.
And that is for, and we'll talk more about it if you, you know.
Oh, I can't speak during a resolution, so that's why I'm.
No, no, I understand. I get it. So that would include the technology that will be installed in the police department. That will include a camera and the installation of the camera in McLaughlin Square.
Such as one camera.
One camera in McLaughlin Square, one camera in the municipal parking lot behind the hook.
Live recording constantly.
Twenty-four seven.
Okay.
And that technology is the same technology that would be used once we install cameras in the parks.
The rest of the parks.
Correct.
Is there a reason why we chose McLaughlin and not like, you know, we lost it, you know, obviously nine eleven, when the flat hole being cut down?
Yes, there is a reason. We have no internet at the Memorial Park, so it's not an option right now, but that is a priority.
And where are we getting internet from town?
There is, it's a, I believe, a dish that's being used. It's the easiest install.
Okay.
One, one, one last point that you can add to that, that other thing that we're talking about.
I'm sorry, what, what other thing?
The well, uh, the well issue, where it says Spindler well pipe repair. Could you, uh, find out also, do we have a written agreement, uh, with the Road to Realty in any way, shape, or form to use those wells? Because even if it's a trailer on that property, those wells aren't ours anymore. I know Tom mentioned that, you know, he gave, he let us, gonna let us use them in an emergency. Do we have anything in writing with, with the owner? So you could find that out, Tom?
I will find that out today. Steve, could you make your case? Any other agenda item questions? No? Okay. Um, moving on to announcements and discussions, an update regarding September eleventh ceremony. I don't know if anyone attended. Um, there were three ceremonies that day. Um, in the morning, we had the J R T C and the retired firefighters ceremony in the afternoon, and the candlelight vigil, vigil, vigil in the evening. Um, and it was, it was a beautiful ceremony, nice turnout. Greatly combined efforts with D P W. They did a fantastic job of cleaning up the park and mulching, and the flags were placed appropriately. The sweeper. The D P W sweeper repair update. It is repaired. Um, it will be on the road tomorrow. On Lincoln Drive, prior to Lincoln Drive paving on Monday, so. We've Chris said, in a couple of weeks, it will, we will start sweeping the roads during the fall. The leading copper study status update. Basically, we're covering downtown, East and West Main Street, Ocean Avenue, and Lark, and Tower Drive. Those are not due until October. Um, it's just the information that needs to be submitted onto H two O, the bid for the wastewater treatment plant, um, the chemicals and the sludge removal. This is something that we do on an annual basis. Um, there's a resolution for that. Get into more detail with it.
I think our contract is up twenty twenty-five with H two O.
Well, H two O, unlikely to hand, probably get this one. So there's a resolution just for the bid later on in the evening. Okay, we're moving on to resolutions. First resolution, twenty-four dash zero one four two. To authorize the employment of Stephen Morea as public works maintenance worker commencing this date September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at an hourly rate of twenty-nine dollars, point oh six nine nine cents. A little bit about him. Chris, maybe you can give more information, but he's got a lot of experience. He's got a C D L license, so that'll be number three for the D P W. Um, he's operated sweepers, dump trucks, plows.
He's a mechanic.
He has a C D L A license. Um, he worked for the village of Monroe up to, uh, it was a year ago he left. Does dump trucks, plows, sweeper, everything we do down here.
So are they going to require me to have a C D L?
Stickle bar mowers. Chainsaws, operator.
He's a mechanic too?
Yeah.
He's a mechanic too, so.
Yeah, right? Deer Park as well as Woodbury, right?
He's in Deer Park. He was, he moved, he lives in Port Jervis. He moved, he, uh, left Woodbury to get a job closer to home. I don't know what exactly happened, but he came back down with a job down in this area and stopped by here and, and the place right now.
We're happy to have him. Okay, so I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four one.
Four zero one.
Four zero one.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, resolution twenty-four dash zero one four three to authorize the hiring, oh, sorry, we're tabling that. Okay? Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four? Four four?
Motion to table?
We're tabling the.
We're tabling the ABC roofing.
You, go ahead and make a motion to table it.
Okay, motion? No notes?
Motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Good?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Uh, resolution twenty-four dash zero one four four to approve Department of Public Works Superintendent Christopher Martino to attend the New York State Conference of Mayors and ICOM Public Works Training School from October twenty-one to October twenty-three, twenty twenty-four in Saratoga Springs, New York, at a cost not to exceed twelve hundred dollars. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Susan, Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four five to authorize Mayor DeVincenzo to submit the Orange County Open Space Funding Application Fall twenty twenty-four for Sewell Park with letters of support from Blooming Grove Conservation Advisor Advisory Commission, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., and community support. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? No? All in favor? Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four six to authorize a public assembly permit to Hudson Valley Hocks for a five K fund run fundraiser to be held at Burn Allen Park on Saturday, December fourteenth, from nine A. M. until two P. M. based on receipt of an amended certificate of insurance. Any motion? Second?
Any discussion?
Discussion?
I just want to verify that this is not going on the same day as Whoville Market?
I looked at the hat. Well, I did, but I didn't, I don't, I didn't check specifically for that, so.
Before we agree to this, I want to make sure it's not the same day that we have all downtown tied up with, uh, the market.
Well, can we agree?
Talking to the individuals sponsoring this from the Hawks, so. The mayor was speaking to the individual from the Hawks regarding this.
Okay, but did somebody cross check the calendar with the events committee?
Whoville, uh, twenty twenty-four is December seventh from eleven to four, and this is the next.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't on the same week, yeah.
All right, you good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes four zero one.
You did have a, a second, a motion and a second?
Do we?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
We did.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
I don't know who did, but we did it. Somebody did. You good?
Oh, yeah.
Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four seven to authorize the purchase of a digital watchdog server and camera system for E. J. McLaughlin Square and camera system for South Street Lot from the lowest price quotation vendor Metro Sound Prose Inc., and a cost not to exceed thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion?
I'd like to discuss.
Discussion? Well, let's have, we can have the discussion.
I would like a lot more information. I personally want to see a spreadsheet comparing the cost of this to, um, the three different parks. What it would cost to get cameras and wifi in there, because I think a higher priority is to get cameras into the parks rather than parking lots. Um, and if it's more, if it's feasible within the next six months before the budget runs out to get it into the parks, I'd like to see it there first.
Well, it's not going to go into Memorial Park.
No, but we still have two other parks.
Right, we do.
And I think that should be a high, that's just my opinion. I think that should be a higher priority than parking lots.
Right.
I feel like we should table it and discuss it later, once we get the authorization. I mean, the reason they're doing that now is because that's ready to go and the elements are not. That wasn't the original intention, but there's no internet. They were told there was internet at Memorial Park, and there was not.
That's one part. There's two other parts there.
That don't have internet also.
Well, we need to then have a comparative study done. That's my opinion. I, I want to see numbers compared apples to apples.
We're going to need to table it then.
That's fine. Motion or table?
Motion?
Yeah.
All in favor to table?
Aye.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Did someone, yes, Bernard did.
Okay.
I thought, what did you do?
I'm motion.
Somebody motioned.
He motions, I second.
All right.
I, the vote?
Four one.
Four zero one?
Trusty Presser, did you vote to table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, four zero one.
Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four eight to authorize Village Clerk Christine Shankman to advertise for bids for water and sewer, and, sorry, for water and wastewater chemicals and wastewater de-water, sludge removal. Bid open date is Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at two P. M. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second, second, Steve? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one four nine to approve the sign for Balance Bodywork and Spa, Inc. based upon approval from Village Building Inspector Gene Ormison. We all saw the updated revisions for the fourth time.
Yeah, they look good. Looks good.
We just had new requirements passed down. Um, so for downtown signage that are on multi-business areas, you know, they clustered, they're going to need to comply to, um, white background and black lettering. The ones that are on multi-clustered buildings.
The script law will look like the script, like we're at the Jays and, like, the trophy guy, that whole section right there?
Well, you know how Orange County bagels is, they're, all those signs are exactly the same. Not quite like that, but at least we've gone over this many times in sign, in, in.
Well, like the trophy guy, he pulled down his sign with new renovations.
Sorry?
The trophy guy currently isn't on the sign right now. So like, like that script, you want everybody to have the same sign?
The same, well, not the exact same sign, but we're requiring the same colors. And the background needs to be white, the lettering black, just to keep some consistency and not have that cluttered look.
So like, the new business next to the trophy guy, he will put up his sign.
Well. There wasn't, right, no.
Oh, well, now the trophy guy pulled down the sign.
We didn't get an application. If we don't get an application.
Okay, so the guy, the trophy guy who just pulled down the sign, is it going to require to apply for a new sign?
No, good point. Good point. We're going to need to discuss it. I would say yes.
The sign was pulled down because the windows were in such a war shape that they had no choice but to repair the windows? So it's a discussion to have?
It was that way back in the day, right? They were all burgundy and, right, we're just trying to maintain a little bit of historical integrity down there. So you have a motion and a second? Motion? Somebody make a motion?
You made the motion, I thought.
No, I can't make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one five zero to authorize the budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfer of funds into pay warrants. Motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero one. Public comment on non-agenda or any public comment on any items?
I can, I just note, I'm just looking at the code here. If he's placing the same sign back up after repairing windows, I don't read the code as requiring him submit a new application.
It doesn't?
If he doesn't alter it or relocate it, he doesn't need to submit a new application.
I'm just saying that because he told, I had this conversation with him. He told me he liked one of the signs that was across the street. It all started with, um, What a Girl Wants, and he wanted.
That would be an alteration, so he would have to file it.
That happens to also be the black and white, right?
If it's the same sign that's going back up in the same place, no, I don't think he needs to file it. If it's a different sign or it's going in a different place, yes.
I have a question. Bill Greber, Washington, Illinois. Um, what is the, maybe you've done this before, and I apologize. What is the focus on this lead copper study?
Well, I didn't hear the.
What is the focus, the lead in, the lead?
They have the water mix. Susan, actually, she can make that.
Yeah, so do you remember Michigan where an entire city couldn't use their water because of lead in the pipes?
Right.
New York State has mandated that municipalities catalog their lead pipe inventory, so we have been working, um, diligently to complete different areas of the town. Emerson and Seacord were done just before paving in case we had to note anything there. And the last part of it is obviously anything built before nineteen seventy, which is a majority of your downtown area.
And people are being more cooperative now. It was a rough start, but.
So it's clearly a lead study. It has nothing to do with copper. Copper is just.
Well, we just know it's lead and copper.
Preferably it's copper.
Right.
Copper's okay.
Yeah.
Right.
So, um, they haven't made any mandates yet about having to remediate it, but first they want the inventory down.
When's, when's the schedule to be done?
Pardon?
It's due, the, the results are due in October, not to have the work, not the replacements, not the work, but the study is done, due in October. You're welcome. Paul?
Paul, I'm Tempehatri. And I, I got three things, and one of them was the sign on that new Greek restaurant. I think it looks pretty good. I, I don't know. It looked very similar to the one that was there. That's why I had to double take, so maybe.
So the problem is, number one, they never submitted an application.
Right.
Number two, we just turned down, somebody's got rejected because it didn't comply to the new signage requirement, so it's not.
That was going to be one of my questions, but you already, you already handled that. The other thing is, could you go over the I M A that you have with the, with the town through the building inspector? How many hours a week was that?
It's twenty, up to twenty-four a week.
Twenty-four a week, and how much money was it?
Forty, don't quote me, it was about forty thousand.
Forty thousand, that's what I, okay, and then when I was looking on the, and that, I think I brought it up at the time. Uh, I know on July fifteenth, you said you were in process of doing the I M A. Uh, when we had the secret, uh, special meeting on seven twenty-nine, that's when you did the resolution. But then we had, we had, I know it was in the minutes, but again, the minutes on the website weren't updated. We had a conversation about the content of the I M A, but it wasn't updated. That's why I just, but it's twenty-four, and that's for all three, right?
All three what?
I mean, it's just, when we say building inspector, that's not, that's not twenty-four hours per person, because it's three.
No, that's total.
That's total, and forty thousand total.
Correct, not exactly forty thousand.
Okay, whatever, forty, forty-two, whatever it was. Uh, can I ask, maybe the attorney would be better for this. What's the status of the lawsuit, the one that was filed back in May by Mochi?
Oh, so I, I'm not the attorney handling that lawsuit. Uh, there's separate insurance counsel is handling that.
So what do we, do we know the status, where it's at? Do we know how much, do we know how much money we've paid in legal fees so far?
That one, that one's paid, it's carrier paid.
Who?
Carrier. The insurance carrier pays it, because it's for monetary damages.
Okay.
I've dealt with these suits before, and given, there's very little chance of sixty-one East Main succeeding.
Okay.
Especially on the federal suit, um, because they don't have a final opinion from the planning board or the zoning board denying.
Okay.
Yeah, so without that, it's what we call not ripe.
All right. Good. And while I got you, how's the building inspector thing going on there?
It's still progressing.
Still progressing?
I don't have anything, updates on that.
No dates, no, no, no runs, no hits, no errors.
There's another appointment coming up in October that was rescheduled from August, I believe.
Right.
That's right.
I would appreciate that information on that, that well pipe repair though, because I don't know who's paying for that. We, I don't, I don't know. And if, if there's any agreement with the real, the owner of the property.
I took your note and your question.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you. Paul? I'm sorry, Vinnie?
Vinnie, I'm from our court. Back to the, uh, camera resolution that you guys tabled. Uh, I walked downtown. I appreciate you guys tableing it. There's, there's only currently at least five cameras outside of businesses down there, and I hope this department's got one facing towards the gas station that way. I feel we should take that funds, either bank it, save it, reinvest it, and put cameras elsewhere that we do need, like the parks. You know, if that doesn't have internet, maybe we could try to get some internet down there. But to spend that money down there, downtown, there's, there's too many cameras down there, it is. And the police got to pull cameras from local businesses. They do it all the time.
That's part of the grant, that thirty-four and change?
Yeah, that's fine, but use that money towards.
There's ninety-nine thousand and change, I believe, again, don't quote me, um, but it has to be used for technology.
That's fine. We can use that technology in our parks, put internet.
Well, we have every intention of making Memorial Park was a priority.
Yeah, but I just feel like downtown, there's enough cameras down there. I counted up these five that are walking through. They might not be our cameras, but they're there, and if the police meet them, they, they're going to have access to them.
It's fair standing, thank you.
So, um, back to the last meeting where I brought up access to our wastewater treatment plant. After that last meeting, I spent some time down there, four hours, and my observations, it seems like there's two locks on that gate. When Spindler goes down there, he's got his lock that he's unlocking, and when our D P W guys go down, the police department goes and gets gas, there's another lock there for them. There should be one lock on that gate, our lock. Spindler shouldn't have his lock on it. It should, we should have only access, and we, he should not have access all business houses. There, there needs to be a security protocol down at that wastewater treatment plant.
So I know you had the conversation right after our meeting with the superintendent, correct, on D P W regarding this?
No.
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 H two O.
With Finnegan?
I, I asked him if there was a camera down there, yeah, which there's not.
It's my understanding that he had explained everything to you.
He explained that he's a certified water carrier. I said, which is great. Is he, he can be certified all he wants. I'm, I'm a certified police officer in New York State. I can't just throw my uniform on and say I'm working in Washington today. He's not a village employee. He should not be there after hours. There's nobody watching. There's not even a camera on the meter. Nobody should be in there. Nobody should be in there, do we? Do we leave the door to the village hall open for village residents to come in and make incident reports at that computer at the front desk? We don't, why? Because we're not gonna leave it open when there's nobody here. Regardless of whether he's a certified water hauler or not, he's not a village employee. He shouldn't be walking down there when our employees aren't there to monitor the sale that we're selling him of water. Period. If there's an accident, if stuff goes missing, if he's manipulating the meter, I'm not saying he is, but, listen, you don't know. Nobody's there to see, and there's not even a camera pointing in that direction. Maybe we should put the camera down there, because he's not a village employee. And, and why are there two locks? I went down there today, why is the pipe hanging over the fence on the inside? Doesn't make any sense to me, it, it, there's something wrong with that, it, it's not okay.
I understand your concern. And all I can say is, I mean, I don't have a black and white answer for you right now, so.
You know, we've got a fence around a water tower, up in Stone Ridge, there's a fence around a water tower, why are we securing the water tower? Because it's all water, right, we're keeping people out, that's what that fence is for, keeping people out that don't work here.
Okay, any other comments? Um, we do an executive session, I believe, for Attorney General Privilege?
A short one on, yeah, on a legal issue.
Right.
Personnel matter?
No.
And as always, no decisions will be made.
So, motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
All in favor?
No, motion to adjourn person.
We can adjourn for going into.
Now, you go to executive session, then you adjourn after you come out of executive session. But we have no business afterward.
No decisions will be made.
Yeah.